Seven o'clock according to that clock. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order and I'd like to first, first order of businesses, I'd like to ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everyone this evening. Thank you for joining us. And first order is, I'm gonna just do some quick, brief introductions and I'm gonna start at that end this time. We have, at the very end, we have our HR Communications Coordinator Cassandra Tabor. And then we have our City Clerk Chris Lindquist and welcome back, nice to have you here again. And then we have our City Engineer Paul Hornby with WSB. Then we have Council Members Shannon Bruce, Mike Maliter, Pam Mortenson, Patricia Thol, and I'm the Mayor, I'm Lisa Whalen. And then to my right, our Administrator Mike Barone. Brian Grimm is our Finance Director. David Abel is our Community Development Director. And then sitting in for Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven this evening is Andrew Biggerstaff. Welcome back again. And then on the end is our Chief of Police Paul Falls. So with that, we have a motion, do we have any other changes or additions to the agenda as printed? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Some more.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Mortenson made the motion and Ms. Thol seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next, we have a special presentation, that's a 2018 preliminary tax levy. We did have a lengthy discussion at our work session regarding this. And Brian's going to do a presentation.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Counsel, this should be, I guess, a sort of brief presentation seeing we've had a few discussions on the preliminary levy for 2018, but we'll go through, I think it's thirteen, fourteen slides or so, and then there's actually some action items that are on the agenda under the business portion of the meeting. So, I guess just to give, you know, everyone our timeline, so we met on August 7th with the staff and council in the work session to go over the initial budget presentation. It was, you know, discussed again as the Mayor stated here at the August 21st and September 5th work sessions. And then the action item is to adopt a preliminary levy and there's a couple others, setting a public comment date and some other with our debt levies, action items at the regular meeting during the business portion. Some of the goals each year is, you know, obviously first and foremost, ensure the city's financial stability, capital improvement needs, whether it be infrastructure or equipment, making sure we have the proper staffing and levels, you know, to match our service levels for the services we're providing for the, you know, our community here. And then funding our payment management plan has been something we've really, I guess, made a point of emphasis the last several years. So we had a few different options that were presented at the, during the work session and then this is a compilation of the, I guess, option that there seemed to be a consensus around the majority of the council members. So you can see we have multiple parts to our levy, our general fund levy, which is our operational piece and that is staying the same from last year. So the debt fund levies, that's going up and I'll talk about that a little later as far as some of the road projects, we have an additional road maintenance going on, I guess, I guess the additional road maintenance is right under that. And then you can see the gross levy within our dollars, we get back from the county fiscal disparities for a total net levy of just shy of 4.4 million there. It's just for trend analysis here, basically our levy even as it's proposed today is still less than it was in 2009 with some of the dips we had in previous years and some of the years that we froze it. So this red line here was just a more of a, for comparison, a lot of cities during that same time period more held flat and then did increase, but you know, this is where we've been the last, I guess, ten-year trend. This just shows more in actual dollar amounts to residents, you can see the same type of trend back in 2010. You know, this property is paying about thirteen, you know, 1,033, you know, still paying less in true dollars than they were eight years ago. I don't know of a lot of cities that can say that. Where does your property tax go, just for people when, you know, I think they sometimes don't understand, you know, I pay almost five thousand, or in this example, forty-eight hundred dollars for the total tax bill for properties valued at four-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, which is roughly our medium value here in Minatrista. So you can see, we're this green portion over here, about 1,000, 150 or so, so about just shy of a quarter comes to the city, but on average, the county of this person's bill would get about forty percent, school would be twenty-nine percent, and then their miscellaneous, which I guess is your watershed districts, your mosquito control, that kind of stuff, has the rest. So just to remind everybody that we're basically, as it stands right now, about a quarter of your tax bill comes to the city to fund city services. Tax impact, so with the option that was, as mentioned earlier, we discussed a few options and the option that there seemed to be the most consensus around, it would be basically about a 5.43 percent net levy increase. But we basically had about three, three and a half percent new growth, new improvements in the city, so when you're taking that and adding more people to the pool that are here in the city, in essence, you know, basically a couple percent or so is what spread to, I guess, the existing residents. And what's shown here is just an average valuation increase, I think a lot of existing properties will probably see, or at least on average, will see a three and a half, three, four percent increase. So if you take 2017, increase it by that much, you know, that three and a half percent, you get your different dollar amounts for 2017 and '18, which you can see is basically about a twenty to sixty dollar increase, and that's annual. So, you know, if you take that for a month, it's two to five dollars for those respective properties there, using that projected tax rate of about 26.23 percent. Fund balance, one of the things we're doing is to try to help mitigate a levy increase with some of the major road projects we're doing is to use some of our fund balance. So we're planning on, you know, we spent down, some down in 2016 and we're looking to do the same in 2017 and '18 here to get that more around this fifty percent area here. So we're trying to use a combination of all the different, I guess, resources, taxes, cash on hand, et cetera, so. One of our biggest expenses always is our capital improvement plan for funding our equipment. We've tried to smooth this out a little bit for basically paying for our public works equipment, police, you know, our technology equipment we need, campus maintenance. We're still catching up a little bit from several years ago when we really ramped it back, but I think with the last few years, we've made some more investments in this area and hope to continue staying, I guess, even in type of investment in our capital improvement plan for equipment. Some budget assumptions and commitments, some, each year, you know, we'll have the labor contracts as well as non-union salaries and benefits and labor contracts, I think are coming later this year for negotiations, so that's always something that I guess, all entities, I guess, that are, you know, cities, you know, that have unions and as well as non-unions, deal with. Capital improvements, so for, we're planning on using a equipment certificate to fund some of those capital improvements for equipment that I had on the previous slide, so that's estimated to be about a $58,000 impact for five years on that equipment certificate. Our payment management plan, we're looking at, we've been doing about a hundred thousand a year for part of the five-year phased-in plan to get it based on what the, I guess, our road committee recommended several years ago to fund, seal coat and mill and overlay and just keeping maintenance of our roads more, I guess, current or up-to-date or however you want to say that. And then lastly, we have the Halsted and Enchanted Road Street Projects that are included in the, should say, 2018 levy, 2017 projects for 2018. But those have been, you know, the contracts are letting, you know, construction work started on those projects and that's the other largest part of our levy increase. Stated earlier, we've done some different things as far as some, trying to look at some internal transfers and some different use of reserves to be able to keep our fund balance, you know, right around fifty percent or a little under. So we've, you know, we've looked at all of our different areas before, you know, in putting together our budget options, so. This more to show is, you know, the tax levy trend that we have, you know, planned and using some of our reserves from our general fund and then what our projected fund balance percentage is projected to be. I guess, in summary, so there's the action items, you know, later in the meeting here and we're looking for a, I guess, action on or a vote on the proposed preliminary levy increase, which is about the 5.43 percent. As stated earlier, it's basically roads, the capital projects and maintenance is the majority of the increase and then the other part is the equipment certificate for the budgeted equipment purchases. The general fund levy is set to be at a zero percent or same as last year. And then lastly, the final budget can be worked on through the fall in the levy that's certified as the ceiling, it can be left the same or reduced, but not, can't be increased, so. That's, I guess, in summary, I guess, our, what we've been discussing the past month or so here in multiple meetings and I don't know if I discuss now or more under the business portion.
Well, why don't we, yeah, this is basically a presentation and then we'll bring it back under the item, agenda item for more discussion. Is that, okay. All right, so now we have persons to be heard. There's some people signed up, but Mr. Meyer, I think you don't need to speak because you're on the consent. And then the other two that are signed up, I'm gonna give you an opportunity under that consent agenda. So is there anybody else that's not signed up that wants to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, can?
It's on the agenda, but it's state.
Okay, yeah, so the PUD or the Planned Unit Development, the Red Oak Woods, will be on, is on our agenda and anybody here that wishes to speak in that regards will be allowed to do so. So we'll move on to consent agenda items and they consist of approving our work session meeting minutes from August 21st, 2017. B is approve our regular meeting minutes from August 21st, 2017. C is a resolution to approve our claims. D is a resolution to approve a front yard setback variance at 370 County Road 92. E is a resolution to approve a step increase in probation completion for Josh Brown, in our Public Safety Officer, one of our Public Safety Officers. And F is a resolution to approve a step increase for Chad Griggs, who is also a Public Safety Any removals? None, is there a motion to approve consent agenda item A, B, C, D, E, and F?
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we don't have any public hearings this evening, we do have some business items. So we're gonna start with adopting an ordinance for rezoning, this is the PUD for the Red Oak Woods and that is 1035 County Road 19 from an R2 to a PUD. And Mr. Abel, I think that's you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel, and just to clarify, there are, there's two, technically two agenda items with this, I'll talk about both together so we don't break, talk about one and then talk about the other.
Okay.
It's easier just to present both of them and then we can field questions and give the applicant an opportunity to speak about both. So as you stated, Mayor, the proposed development's at 1035 County Road 19. Counsel, you have seen this through a conceptual concept sketch plan review several months ago, went through our parks planning and city council for comment and it also got sent out to outside agencies for comment as well. The aerial there provides an overview of the property, you can see where it is in relation to County Road 19 and then how it is encompassed by the Red Oak development there. So first to start out, as you stated, Mayor, they are requesting a zoning amendment from R2 to a planning and development. The reason for the request is to provide for flexibilities with regards to the lot standards, specifically they're looking at lot width, lot area and building setback deviations as part of this PUD. There are three criteria that are outlined in city code when rezoning to a PUD and as outlined in your staff report, we've found that it does meet two of those criteria and the fact that it is adjacent to the Red Oak development, which was developed as a PUD and the proposal has similar lot sizes to that in Red Oak and has the same density as to what Red Oak would have with that three units per acre. The proposed development is also compatible with the surrounding land uses being that it's residential in the neighborhood and that is certainly a residential neighborhood in the area there. When, also when looking at a new development that is seeking a rezoning to a PUD, you want to look at the public values that are indicated in city code. There are ten different values listed in our code and as outlined in the staff report, there are six different public values that we cite in the staff report that the proposal's meeting. I won't get into specifics, but just to briefly go through that list and through what's in your staff report, there's outlot improvements that is designed as usable space with park amenities. They're looking for a potential future trail connection to a public park, Woods of Saga Hill Park. The applicant is proposing a wooded buffer and preserving trees along the perimeter of the property for screening. I know that was something discussed at the Planning Commission meeting and I think something the applicant will be prepared to talk more about tonight. Another thing that was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting was hardcover and I think too, per some of the materials distributed tonight, the applicant be able to show how he's meeting the hardcover requirement and has actually decreased the hardcover that was being proposed at the Planning Commission meeting. The other important public value here is the villa housing style and variety that that's offering to the city of Minatrista that's fairly new to the city, it's new to this area. It's offering a variety of housing styles, it's geared more towards empty nesters or retirement-type age people, so the big, the bigger public value there being the variety of housing style that it's offering to the community. And then lastly, just the development itself as it promotes aesthetically pleasing design and a high-quality construction that is something called out in our city code and something the applicant is striving for as part of this development proposal. So specifically, back to what those areas of flexibility are to go to a PUD, one being a 50-foot right-of-way instead of a 60-foot right-of-way, looking at 55-foot lots instead of 75, but as you'll see in the plan, most are around 65-foot in width. You're looking at lot range, lot sizes from 7,200 square feet all the way up to 1,400, 8,009 square feet, whereas in the R2 zoning district, you have a minimum lot size of 11,000 square feet. The applicant is looking at a 25-foot front yard setback instead of a 30, that allows him to get closer to the road and save some of those perimeter trees. And then also what they're looking to do is have a side yard variation of five and 10 with a minimum of 15 feet between the structures. This is a little bit of a reduction from the 10-foot that's required in the R2 district. So this, as we know, is the existing conditions of the site, there is a single-family home on the site and you can see the black dots there are the existing trees on the site that the applicant's been maintaining over the years. So this is the proposed 14-lot preliminary plat subdivision, can see the outlot, I was referring to with the amenities that is being proposed, stormwater pond, access off of County Road 19. This will be, the thought would be a temporary cul-de-sac with the idea that if the property, if and when someday in the future were to ever develop, that would be the connection to that street. As you see from the comments from the county, the county wants to limit the number of access points off County Road 19. So when you're developing on major county roads like that, they want to be cognizant of what the neighboring properties, how they would gain access if they were to ever develop someday down the road, because now is your opportunity to look at that. So here again is just a, another view of the proposed plat, this is showing the landscaping that the applicant is proposing to do, so the round being the trees that he's proposing to plant on the site, trying to provide that screening and buffer to the surrounding adjacent areas. So quickly to go into the preliminary plat, the guided density per the comp plan of the property is two to three units per acre, that's per our 2011 comp plan. The zone density is 2.0 to 3.5 units per acre, so that's what our R2 district calls for. You look at the buildable area of the lots, we've taken out what the county is acquiring for additional right-of-way and you get that 4.5 acres. If you do the math, you have a minimum guided units of nine and a maximum of 14. He's at this range, he's at three units per acre for the total of the 14 total units that's being proposed on the site. The Planning Commission did review these applications at their meeting here last month. Regarding the ordinance amendment for the rezoning, there was a 3-2 vote to recommend denial of the rezoning request. The Planning Commission stated that the trail was not enough benefit to the city to compromise the density of the development. And then also as per in your staff report and the minutes in your packet, you can see the motion followed again with a 3-2 vote in terms of the preliminary plat. They had some concerns with the tree plan and the density. As you see, they had four positives though that they listed as part of their motion and discussion, talking about the good offering, they're interested in the different housing types, they wanted counsel to see other options, they wanted to look for lesser setbacks, again, back to the tree preservation, there was a lot of talk about saving trees and how do we do that, how can more trees be saved, and that leads into the next one with the different cul-de-sac ideas to lessen the tree removal on the site. So those are the recommendations that came from the Planning Commission. What I have here and what I believe the applicant has passed out to you is something that's been updated since the last meeting and this is the hardcover allowances that have been updated. And what you'll see there is that the applicant is showing that each lot would now be at 35 percent or potentially below. The way it was being looked at at the Planning Commission meeting was an overall development, which we've done before with previous PUDs, is as long as the overall development was below the 35 percent, we felt that that met the criteria. And the applicant, I'm sure, will talk more about this, I just wanted to bring this to your attention because this is an exhibit to the ordinance that's being presented tonight. So depending upon the desire of the council this evening, we want to make sure we switch out the exhibits with the appropriate updated page as such. So with that, staff is still recommending approval of both the ordinance amendment to a PUD and the preliminary plat. We do feel, do see that given the calculations, the density, that it is consistent with our zoning ordinance, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So that is still the recommendation, I gave you the Planning Commission's recommendation. We'd need to act on these separate items, of course, as we've done in the past. So with that, I'll turn it to council for any questions and/or if you'd like the applicant to present, I'm sure they're ready.
Shall we have the applicant present first and then we can ask questions and also there's people here that will want to make some comments as well. So maybe Mr. Martinow, you can come forward, I'm sure you'll keep it brief.
Oh, yes, I will. Thank you, my name's Jeff Martinow, I am the owner of 1031 County Road 19, I also live on North Shore Drive in Orno. I'm going, I'm gonna really kind of cut to the chase and when I can get into the, my attempt to resell it on the product type, because I think there's a general consensus that the product type, or the home styles are welcomed. I bought this property 14 years ago and shortly after that I did approach Dave Abel and with full intent of developing the property into larger lots that backed up to a golf course. And Dave and I kidded when we were in that meeting about the necessity to meet the minimum standards of the Met Council and how I would probably have to go dig a pond in the backyard to demonstrate that it had wetlands on it so that it fit the criteria of what I was trying to do with larger lots with the tree ambience. I actually then, not long ago, a couple of years ago, I put two of those lots on hold with intent to sell custom homes on that type of wooded setting. And then here came the loss of our, the Red Oak Golf Course. And then there went my lot holds immediately, once that Red Oak development was approved. And I'm not here and I never have and I don't think I'm gonna get into it tonight about Red Oak bashing, because it's here, we need to embrace it, we need welcome and success and I think most importantly, we need to learn from that, learn from that by, we really want to do what we can, what I feel is best for a piece property that's adjacent to it. And unfortunately, no matter what we do with the development of this property, we're gonna lose a lot of trees and could lose all of them if we do it incorrectly. I really have focused at the best use of this property as to add in my mind and my profile and what I've done in the past is that any improvements that I am obligated to do or obligations that I have to, to tree replacement, parks, whatever, I am a fan of doing it on-site. I just, you know, brain wedge as much as I probably have the responsibility to just write a check and walk away in the best interest of maximizing my profits and minimizing my risk, but as it relates to this property, from day one, I chose to clear the woods, update trees and promote enhancement of that tree neighborhood in hopes that those trees are gonna have some type of value down the road. When Red Oak came in, I still didn't clear cut the woods. I felt that I'm just gonna hit the pause button, see what's best, I really believe this is the best use of this property. It focuses on minimizing the size of the homes, it focuses on minimizing the impact of the surrounding properties. And when I first looked at this, I've always, and we started to get involved with the concept and in front of, and even as recent as in front of the Planning Commission, I've always said to my engineer, I want the worst-case scenario. Well, on the hardcovers, you saw substantial differences in the first hardcover calculations that we did, they had one that was 54 percent hardcover. In your package, you're gonna see a house plan. I went over to the Villas in Grohlman and I pulled, I had one, I had one problem lot over there that was, that I had to do some real customizing as it relates to the size and configuration of the house. I, I, after I left the Planning Commission, I went over the next day and I pulled the blueprint for that property and lo and behold, that property fit on my worst lot, fit on this lot right here. The plan that you have fits on that lot, fits on the lot setback, fits on the lot as it relates to the hardcover calculations that are, the updated hardcover calculations. The full hardcover on this is 2,500 square feet garage, driveway, the whole impact. The house is 1,400 square feet, pretty nice looking house geared towards retirement or empty nesters or professionals. So I just, I wanted to share with you a couple of things that really, when I really started to look at this, we took our, in your packet, all these packets that I keep handing out, have basically two house plans and there's the necessity to custom-design three homes on the lots. Lot five, lot four, and lot one. All the rest are either done by one of the two plans that are in your book. We took the largest plan and we went all the way around the neighborhood except for those three home sites. We used for the calculation of hardcover, the largest plan, which is 2,800 and 28, roughly 2,810 square feet hardcover garage included, added the garage, added the driveway, added the sidewalks, added sun porch, and all of them fit and the worst hardcover that we came up with was 35 percent on those lots. So I'm sorry that my calculations were wrong, I just, and it isn't that these are fudge, these are hardcovers that have to do with those house plans and the largest one. When the Planning Commission, when we were in the commission, they said... When the planning commission, when we were initially, they said, "What could this property be?" So the engineers take a look at it.
Mr. Martino, I don't think we could see that. Can you bring it over here?
Sure.
And then, I know my eyesight isn't great, but...
This plan goes lots. Our 75-foot frontage, their minimum of 100 feet deep, their minimum square footage a lot, 11,000 square feet. They meet the R2 category. We took the square footage of those to stay within the 35% hardcover on all those lots. We individually calculated them out and came up with 59,258 square feet of hardcover that would fit on those lots. And those houses obviously will become, would become single-family homes, and they would be larger in size, predominantly triple-car garages. I took the same plan and applied for, which is a 14-lot subdivision, with the houses plans that I have with the customs, custom design of the one, four, and five, we came up with a hardcover of 49,130 square feet, 49,133 square feet. So roughly 10,000 less square feet to do this with 14 homes than that, single-family. We also added on the 1,860 square feet of the outlot for the trail and subsequent fire pit that I was proposing, or I am proposing, which I'll come back to. We used that worst-case scenario. We came up with an overall hardcover calculation for that neighborhood of close to, if not just slightly over, 30% hardcover. So in essence, these houses get smaller. And then obviously, if we do a 60-foot wide road instead of a 50-foot wide road, I'm still going to be able to get 12 lots because I'm going to lose five feet on each side, which in essence is going to just push these houses back to their rear yard setback, which then subsequently, I will lose more trees. And the other present, what we're trying to do is save trees, we want to save trees. At the end of the day, we're going to lose a lot of trees here, and I know we're going to lose a lot of trees. But I'm going to do everything I possibly can to reforest this property in whole without writing a check. I don't know if I'm going to get there, but these are the things that I'm looking to do. Number one, I'm willing to put a 15-foot buffer around the whole property, as you can see in a red line, and not take out more than 30% of those trees, except for where I have to. This is where the main sewer line enters the property. And I can't stick it up on the trees, and I can't raise the trees above it, so I'm going to lose the trees there, I'm going to lose them all, to get the sewer line on the property. I'm willing to not take out more than 30% of the trees surrounding that property, the 15-feet circumference. I'm also willing to agree to reforest, no less, a minimum of 50% of the trees that are my obligation, will go back onto that site, and will focus it to be in the area of us, that 15-foot buffer zone. And when we're done, and we have, and it's safe, we'll establish a 15-foot conservation easement that will surround this property to protect those trees in the future. Because when I read the city mandated stuff, anything that's not on an outlot is kind of like when it dies, it's gone, or when it, if somebody chooses to cut it down, it's out of here. And at the end of the day, I'm not interested in planting trees that somebody else cuts down. So, the long and short of it is, these are homes that minimize, that are minimal in size and high in quality. They are carefully located on the lots with 25-foot front yard setback to minimize the size of the home going towards the backyard. The five-foot side yard setback variance or flexibility allows us to maximize the houses this way, not lengthwise. At the end of the day, I'm willing to replant on-site as much as I possibly can, my goal is to do it exclusively on-site. If I can't, I know I will get a minimum of 50% of my obligation covered. And at the end of the day, I think it's the best use of this property. Got one, two questions, or two comments. One was a gentleman that was on the planning commission right here, he said, "Have you taken a look at all the engineering obligations from the reports that came through?" And I said, "I had," and we had to address them all, "and we could operate within those guidelines." There's one area that I'd like to get some further clarification, because we can do it, but I met with the neighbors after the planning commission, they had come here and talked. And one of the things that they'd asked, engineers suggested, was that the sewer line would enter here, instead of going this way, would come this way and go this way. Obviously, Baileys have been there for a long time, longer than I own this property, and far longer than I own this property, and they plan to be there for 20 years. And I like to do everything I can to allow the forestation of that line to be maximized by pushing the house on lot two, block two, as close to the inside line as I possibly can, and maximize the side yard setback to 15 feet, so that that buffer of 15 feet is protected all the way through and not compromised where the house is. And then, and to do that, I got to get the sewer line to go up between the property so I have the ability to save potentially whatever trees I possibly can in that 15-foot buffer. Secondly, I offered to the city, I proposed to the city and the park board that I would put the trail in, and I'm willing to do that, but I think that's not a good idea at this time. And the reason for that is the Baileys have it this time, bless their hard children that are trespassing in their woods from the park on the other side. And by putting the trail in now to have it go to the edge of their property is just promoting trespassing in. And so what I'd like to propose is that I dedicate the easement, dedicate the park area, plant trees to take in consideration of that, and then leave it alone until at what, at the time that they go to develop the property. So I think I've answered all my questions and commented on the handles that I gave, and any other questions, you're welcome to ask me.
Okay. Do you want to ask questions of the applicant now? I mean, he's always available even later, or we can take comments from the public.
I have one quick, easy question, I think. Mr. Abel, could you switch it to page 68, or the aerial view? Where is the Bailey's property to the south?
That's theirs, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll have questions, yes?
I had a question about the left turn lane. I saw in our packet that the county was proposing a left turn lane going north, a left turn lane to go into the development. Is that something the developer is cost-sharing or paying for?
Correct. Yes, correct. Actually, Metameric Council, the county technically wants two turn lanes. They want a right turn lane southbound and then a northbound center-left turn lane. Through conversations with the county, given the size of this development, we posed the question, is it really necessary to construct both right now? If you had to pick one, what would be the most important one? They said at this time, the northbound left turn lane would be their priority. We proposed the idea, well, we can understand a right, a southbound right turn lane is necessary, but wouldn't that be more necessary when and if the property to the south were to ever develop in the future? And they agreed that at that time, if that were to ever develop, that would be the requirement of that development, that development, to put in the southbound right turn lane. So if you had the developer's obligation to do that northbound left turn lane at this time.
Okay. Tied to that, as I was reading through the materials, I wondered, okay, who's the lucky one that gets to pay for that turn lane?
The developer.
And there was a memo or an email from Hennepin County where it said, "The city would establish an escrow account for this developer to contribute into for the other turn lane." Or maybe that's regarding the south.
Yeah, that was, that was an idea that was floated out there, but there's many complexities to doing something like that.
So it was a thought, and it's not going to work?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to open it up right now to Mr. Martino, did you want to say?
No.
Okay, I'm sure we'll have some more questions for you. So I'm going to open it up, if anybody's here that would like to speak or have some comments regarding this development, I believe there are some people, you'll have to come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Council members, staff, thank you. Ralph Harrison, 4935 Randu Avenue. And I also just want to start by saying that Mr. Martino, met with me and the Baileys and very forthcoming with information, I very much appreciate that. And I guess, you know, my take on it was bad blood with the Red Oak Development, we've all heard about that, different city council, not your problem, not your fault. But we still kind of see the consequences of this, and there's a lot of sensitivity to it. When I met with Jeff, my hope was, and in my mind, you know, the biggest pull of that is saving the trees, and, you know, to be honest, minimal density where we can do this. I don't see, just because they did it in Red Oak, does that mean we're just going to do the same thing all across the board? I mean, it's not consistent to do that according to comprehensive plan. I know that it leaves all the standards and all the measurements, but that's not really in the spirit. We don't necessarily have to maximize to the max all the density in the city, particularly in the neighborhoods. But in meeting with Jeff, it became clear, as he mentioned to you, that no matter what happens here, whether it's conventional development or PDU, the great majority of these trees are going to go, just by the nature of the geography of the land, he's got to get the water to go to the right place, and unfortunately, that's the way it's going to be. So I appreciate the 15-foot buffer, but honestly, most of the big trees are in further than 15 feet, so it's kind of a red herring as far as trees saving those. So the other big benefit of the city that has been presented is the design, this villa design. I can appreciate that, I don't know if that's who's going to, I don't know if senior people are going to move into that, there's no guarantee. But I, in my mind, I don't understand why a PUD is necessary to do that. He's not prohibited from building that type of housing without a PUD. What I see from this is that this PUD is being used simply to, you know, increase the density and the profit margin for the building. And I don't, I don't think that that is in the spirit of what the neighbors would hope to see, and it doesn't preclude him from building, building the kind of mixed housing that maybe we'd like to see. So that's really all I had to say at this point, and appreciate your help and your comments and your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anybody else over here?
Jody Youngquist, thank you for letting me speak. I live at 950 Red Oak Lane, so I wanted to first of all start by saying, I know that you have every right in the world to build on your property, and we'll probably all want that same right at some point with property we have. And that most of you were on the council when the Red Oak decisions were made, as you can imagine, the Red Oak property is, or the development is a very emotional one for me, I have to drive through it every day, and I don't think it's gone very well. I reached out to some of our neighbors and was hoping that more of them could make it tonight, but with the first day of school today and after holiday, it's hard to get people last minute, but I did ask them if they had any comments that they'd like to share, so I thought I would just share them with you, so you can hear what a lot of the people that were involved in the Red Oak development and coming here and speaking wanted to say. And the biggest thing is that we want to make sure everybody here knows that we're paying attention, and that we're seeing the Red Oak PUD came through and now this one, and this is much smaller, and we're all really aware of that, so we don't want to make a comment out of the overall, but it seems to be, you can't hear me, it seems that it's starting to set a precedence, and our open green spaces in Minutrista are being turned into housing developments, and then after the housing development is figured out, we cram even more houses in there. It doesn't sound like Minutrista has a density issue like we used to, we had a density deficit, and that was something that Red Oak more than made up for. And so that as we're looking at this development, future ones, I think we really need to ask ourselves, is a PUD necessary? Can we have a little bit more spaces between the houses, give people more of a yard? I think there's some neighbors that are very concerned that this might lead to multifamily housing at some point, and we don't want to see that happen on there, we'd like to have, keep this a single-family housing area. And I want to just say again, the Red Oak, I'm going to bash it a little bit because I have to live with it, houses are not selling there. It is nowhere near what they thought it was going to be. And for the neighbors that live around it, listening to construction six days a week, and driving through, getting nails in our tires and everything else because we have to live with construction, the thought of also having another stuff like that going up right afterwards, we'll be living with construction probably for about six years at this point. And that's part of living there, but I want people to be aware of that. The other thing with the Red Oak, they did the really narrow roads, if somebody leaves their car on the street at night, and you're coming to get out with your car, you have to stop and let another car go through. So there's absolutely no space on those roads to get through, and getting through around that construction, and that one is terrible. And again, this one doesn't have that issue because there aren't residents using it. One of my neighbors was concerned about the elderly housing, although I love the idea of making proper homes available for people, I'm not sure if that's the best spot for elderly housing, there's no public transportation, and people can't really walk anywhere, so depends on how elderly you are. A 75-year-old mother would be fine, she'd get in the car, but not everybody will be able to do that. And I was very happy to hear that you're doing everything you can for the trees, because watching the trees get all plucked out of Red Oak was terrible, and there aren't a lot of trees, and I was concerned about a buffer for the people of those lots, a lot of them haven't sold on Red Oak back up to where this is going to be. And so if you take out those trees, people are going to even be less likely to want those properties, because they're going to be backing up to other houses instead of the woods. And then just in closing, you know, keeping in mind how much traffic, extra traffic it is with people, it's more dogs, it's more watershed things to consider, the neighbors, a lot of them have concerns about that as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Youngquist. Okay.
Dean Bailey, 1055 Contra Road 19, right to the south of this. And a couple of things, I know we really do enjoy the trees, and we're going to, you know, miss them, I appreciate that, you know, Jeff, you're trying through all that you can to salvage what you can. I know he's made a couple of changes, you know, in that path going right up to our property line, it was just kind of a welcome mat there. And so that's, I appreciate that you, you know, you're not doing that. And as far as this road coming out there, yeah, as I said, we're going to, it's going to be a number of years before we anticipate moving away. I do appreciate the single-level housing that Jeff is proposing there, you know, it seems like it would be, you know, blending in a lot better than two and three-story units and stuff, so I appreciate, you know, as Jeff is doing on that, I appreciate the borderline of the trees around there, that would help a lot. I guess that I, I just, Monday thing is the density, you know, if we could do the same thing as well, that'd be wonderful as opposed to 14 down there, so.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so I have a couple of questions, Mr. Martino, if you could, and then others will have your turn too. You were saying a 15-foot buffer, and you would only remove 30% within that buffer. Why wouldn't you just leave the buffer?
I would try to do that, and we think we can have very minimal tree removal in that 15-foot. However, there are a couple of areas that are concerning, one we can work with and one we can't. I'll show you those.
Okay.
On lot five, we have, most of the trees along here, there are not on lot two, three, and four, we really don't have that many trees. We have to do grading in here to get the water to come through here and go this way.
The stormwater?
Stormwater.
Yeah, okay.
The stormwater. Now this one, we can deal with, because the house is fairly far away, and we can... Now, this one, we can deal with, 'cause the house is fairly far away, and we can swill. These two, or these three, we can work with because of two reasons. Number one, we have shorter houses than you normally would if you just had lots and lots of single-family homes. They're, they're houses that are not as deep. This lot here, we've looked at, and we are still looking at, in doing a retaining wall more like this, at here. And if you notice, along here, we have, when we put that fifteen-foot buffer in, there's a retaining wall that is inside that fifteen-foot area. And we, we just couldn't do the engineering at this time, but we're, for the purposes of protecting the fifteen feet. But you notice on that lot, there aren't any trees.
Okay.
But what we would work to do is, so that we can reforest in this area here, we would move, we would raise this wall, and engineer either a higher wall or a two-tiered wall. And we have the flexibility doing that, because the type of buyer, buyer that we're looking at, they promote that. Are we gonna go quickly?
Yep, it's fine.
Backyards?
Okay.
And wooded backyards are more of interest to them than larger spaces and untreated lots. Right here, you can see that they're, the wooded buffers are very much an asset to this type of housing. So, we would work to create a higher wall here to stay out of that fifteen feet. And quite frankly, I don't think I'd lose anything long here, especially if I put a wall in here that my engineer and I talked about. At this point, right here, where the sewer enters the property and gets up into this area, we gotta get around that column.
Right.
So, in that area, we are gonna lose trees. And I have not talked to staff yet, or the engineers of the city, but my hope would be to replant that. And I obviously can't bring in thirty-foot wide trees. I replant that the best I could, and then re-tree that, and then put a conservation easement over it, if the city would allow me to do that on top of the sewer line.
Generally, we don't.
Okay, well, then, wherever, whichever way they go, and then just that much more.
Right.
For the Bailey's sake, would go, I'd rather not come up this way.
Sure.
But you wanna come in, now, we are gonna lose those trees there, and there's nothing I can do about it.
Okay. Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. Can you go back to that one picture? Okay, that one. How, how far is it from the tree buffer to the, to the building? Is that approximately twenty feet? Yeah, like twenty feet?
Probably twenty feet.
So, what do you have on your current plan? What I'm trying to get at is, can we make that buffer larger?
Ah, I think you can.
Because I'm just looking at this, and it looks like, if that's twenty feet, maybe your buffer could be twenty or thirty feet.
The only reason that, that I did it at fifteen is that some of these... The set, the rear yard setback's twenty feet, and I thought, if I go twenty, if the house gets up to the twenty-foot rear yard setback, actually, you've got trees right up to the back.
Right, well, that's what I'm wondering is if, okay.
The bottom, the bottom line is, and Dave and I talked about this. The dilemma here, that, and, and I don't, and I wanna be careful I say this, I'm not trying to pick my words, but if my interest was to cut the trees down, I would've done that a long time ago.
No, I understand that, I get that.
I gotta go on site here, and I'm gonna stand on site here knowing that every tree I save, I don't have to replant.
Sure.
So, the intent is there, and I, and at the end of the day, because you're working in an area here that is smaller, and you have to get certain grades in to accomplish, that are easier to accomplish with smaller houses, I'm still gonna have to really work really hard in here. I don't think that I would lose, like I said, fifteen feet. And if, and if I was able to do a twenty-foot wide conservation easement without getting in the back door of a house, I wouldn't have a problem doing that.
Yeah, okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, okay. 'Cause, I mean, as Ms. Youngquist pointed out, one of the issues from Red Oak is just the, the loss of trees. And then, the, but not only the loss of trees, it's actually the buffer between the existing residents and the new development. And they used to have a lot of trees that kind of buffered them, and then all of a sudden, they were just totally gone. And I, I honestly think if we can work with that, work on that, that's one of the biggest issues. And so, and I know that, and of course, for Bailey's, that would be huge as well, to have that buffer and kind of that, that natural fencing. So, just, so we'll, we'll talk about that, but yeah.
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
And I'll make it quick. The, the Red Oak has not, it's obvious that from all the meetings that we've been in, whether or not we've brought some salesperson in here and said, hey, what's your capture rate or whatever, we're not here to do that tonight, but obviously, everybody's got a consensus that Red Oak has not been successful. If we do something like this, that's Red Oak Act Two. That's the same thing, it's...
You're saying the straight R-two zoning?
Yeah, R-two zoning.
Right.
No PUD, no sense, just let the houses morph to the size that they need to morph to, because I'm trying to maximize profit. Actually, I'm more profitable here than I am in that, and I'm taking more risk, but I'm willing to do it because I think it's right, so.
Yeah, and that, thank you for pointing that out. I don't know if the audience, could you hold that up so the audience and... Yes, there you go. No, no, you're not, no, you're not. So, okay, comments? Questions?
I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand, the primary purpose of the PUD is, is to get the variations in the setbacks so that you can save the trees, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the one...
And one of it, it's also to promote that lifestyle of hous, housing, so that it fits with the clientele that wants a tree backyard. Not the backyard with the...
Take your time.
Not the backyard. I went over to, and I met one of your planning commission members without knowing where he lived, 'cause I went over to a neighborhood after I left the planning commission to just say, what if it had to be a single-family housing development? So, I went over, where would that be? Sunnybrook, I'll go over to Sunnybrook, and I ended up in the backyard of one of the, one of the planning commission members, by mistake, taking pictures of his backyard, and he came out of his driveway and started chasing me in my car. I was thinking I was gonna murder his kid, okay? So, took a picture of his backyard. This is what, they took the woods out of Sunnybrook, okay? And they never reforested it, they made really nice, really nice, usable backyards. I went, I took a picture that way, caught a fire pit, I took a picture that way, caught another fire pit. And they, and they're nice, and they're groomed. But that type of clientele wants to use their backyard, especially because Red Oak did create additional park space to hook onto that park the way they should've done. That park should've been bigger, it's crazy, it's that small. And at the end of the day, at the end of the day, let's not just keep Act Two, Act Three, let's bring more families in. This would be, if, if I did, with fifty-nine homes, and you did this, I got seven, over seventy families using that little dinky park over there. It's, it's not right, so you go after different segment of people that want... The tree buffer, they like the trees, they don't want any yard.
They don't want a lot of yard, yeah.
That's why they need it here. They don't want a whole yard.
So, the, the other question I has, I have is, I assume there's gonna be a homeowners association with these homes? Is it anticipated?
Yeah, and that's, brings up another thing. The tree preservation responsibilities to the outlaw here. By re-tree, which I plan on doing, 'cause I'm pretty passionate on that, I think I'm passionate with anger.
Thank you for that clarification.
By re-tree this neighborhood, by re-tree this, I got getting rid of a lot of trees on site, and I do wanna do that. I passionately wanna do that. And these trees, then, become the responsibility of the association, because in the, in your city ordinance, it says, after you get done treeing, after we get done and we take it over, I'll quote it, "Our tree preservation ceases." That's what the city ordinance says. This is all, this would be all controlled by the association, and this, and this would be in a conservation easement. Can't touch it, no touches on it. So, I just, just passionately believe that this is right.
We, we also saw an email from a concerned neighbor about the type of tree that's gonna be replanted, and the, the large overhangs, and how deep the roots go.
Well, after I met with the Baileys, I went home after seeing their sugar maple that was infested with fungus and mold, and I went home and I looked at my sugar maple that I planted when I did my Kent Tiger neighborhood in Orno, and lo and behold, it was full of mold. So, when I got this email from, today, that came from some neighbor that said you shouldn't be doing sugar maples, I almost sent him back an email and said, I'm not doing sugar maples, I'm gonna do some other type of tree, because I'm not interested in planting a tree that I have to go and cut down. I'm interested in babysitting it until my obligation of warranties up, and the homeowners take it over. So, it won't be sugar maple.
And you probably will do it.
Mold all over the mine.
So, and then, how long, so another question that came up is build-out. What is your anticipated build-out time?
I started the villas in Grove Lane, a year and a half ago. I've got, there's fourteen home sites. I've got four left.
So, you're thinking two years, two and a half?
I'm thinking it's a twenty-four-month in and out.
Okay. 'Cause that would be nice, because as Ms. Youngquist pointed out, there's a lot of building going on, and they have to put up with that, so if it's going on simultaneously with that, it shouldn't... As long as it doesn't go longer than the Red Oak one, I think that should work out pretty good.
I'd be very surprised.
Yeah. A couple of things, I know in your initial presentation, you said, and I really like the smaller homes because of the hardcover, because initially, you were talking about thirty-six hundred square foot homes, and so now, you're talking about twenty, fourteen hundred to twenty-eight hundred, so...
Well, there's a couple of things here, if you look in your packet, if you look at the plans, some of those, a couple of those, the larger units, ability to get up to thirty-five hundred square feet, because the area... I'll show you the sexiest one. This area here?
Oh, can be finished.
Can be finished.
Okay, okay.
Shows us in, in your packet as opposed to...
Yeah, yeah. Pam, do you wanna add anything from the...
Yeah. I attended the meeting with the planning commission, and I think a lot of interesting points were brought forward, and thank you, I think you addressed them. Trees is definitely a big concern, just keeping and replacing. And the other thing that was a big concern was the traffic additional turning language, I believe was addressed as well. And then, they wanted to show the options of the fourteen villas versus the single-family homes, and really weigh the, you know, the pros and cons of both, because it is going to be built one or, one way or the other. So, if they have the option, basically, of, you know, the villa-type home or the single-family. So, I think you did a good job of showing that as well. And just, we talked a little bit about trend. That type of home, I think, is very popular right now. We do have a very high age population in Minutrista, according to the survey, and, and there are some younger ones, too.
Average age of Minutrista residents, forty-five years old.
So, but there's still a lot of older people here that are snowbirds, and they are looking for that type of a home. So, we did address that, so I think, and they like the no-maintenance type building. So, I think, and the trail, taking the trail out. And hardcover. And the hardcover, and you addressed both of those, so.
So, at the planning commission, they, they, and it was a two-to-three vote. Did they vote no on it because of the issues that were brought up tonight? I mean, okay, so, they felt if those issues were addressed?
For the most part.
I'd like to clarify, I was, I was at the meeting as well.
Well, hold on.
Other than density, density is, it is what it is, okay?
That's the big...
So, but all the, the hardcover, it was, he showed the worst-case scenario at the meeting.
Right.
And so, that was explained, so I, that was good. And the tree replacement is a concern too, and that is what it is too, but it was a matter of the loss of option A or option B type thing. So, those were the biggest issues, I think, that you really don't have a lot of control over. That's it.
Yeah.
As far as I saw.
Man?
Of course.
Okay. So, like I said, I was at the planning commission meeting as well. And, you know, the, the biggest concern was the density, all right? And, you know, what we're looking at here is fourteen units. Minimum we can do is nine, okay? So, we've got some flexibility here, as Mr. Harrison pointed out, we don't have to do the maximum. And I think it's really important to draw the parallel of another development we just went through, and that was the Babla property.
And sorry, which one?
The Babla property, which is by the high school.
Okay.
We just approved that last meeting or two meetings ago. When we started that conversation, we had a neighborhood meeting back in February, which most of us were at, and the initial proposal was nine units in that piece of property. What we finally approved were six units, that's a reduction of thirty-three percent. And that happened after a lot of back and forth with the developer. And what I'm seeing here is, I, I don't see that happening, I don't think we're at that point yet. I'm not saying that we're gonna do this at nine, and it doesn't have to be the four, the twelve units as single-family. You could do twelve units as villa, I'm not gonna even, I'm not even gonna say twelve, you know, that's, that's not a number for me to decide. But I think we need to make a better effort, and that's the overwhelming concern I've heard from the audience here, from the planning commission, from the letters in our packet, from, from everyone, is the, the density. And, you know, we just slammed in fifty-nine houses at Red Oak, and now we're adding this much more to the same neighborhood. It's just really not fair to the neighborhood, and that's, that's the number-one concern. I, I think, you know, I'm not, it's not realistic that we're not gonna have development here, we all know that. It's just a matter of, we just really don't need to cram fourteen in here. And it's not, anything against the villa-style homes. So, I, I think we just need to be considerate of the neighborhood and what people are asking us to do. It's not unreasonable, we've shown that we can do that before, and I think we need to, not saying throw the whole thing out, but I think, you know, if you let these houses breathe a little bit more between them, it's gonna help a lot. I, I do wanna talk about, a little bit about the trees. You know, when we look at the stats, we're taking out seventy-eight percent of the trees, of the mature trees that are there. That's huge, that's a big number, and, you know, I'm not faulting Mr. Martino, it's a function of, as he said, it's the grading that's needed for the property, but it's, it's big. And also, I see, you know, with the comment you made about, I'm glad you're, you're thinking about doing some different trees, because what I've seen at Red Oak, and I walk through every day, is that about fifty percent of the trees they plant there die. And, I'm not kidding, you look, there's, there's fifty percent of the trees die, and so they have to come back and redo them, and I've seen even the redos die. So, you know, just because you're planting another tree there doesn't mean guaranteed success, so we gotta be careful about that. I think, you know, in, in terms of the villa homes, you know, I, I don't know, we're adding more housing to an area of Red Oak that's already not sold. I mean, Red Oak's been there three years, it's about a third sold. So, in terms of build-out, like another six years at this pace, which is a good housing market, it could be longer. So, you know, I, but that's just...
That wouldn't, the density wouldn't really matter, though, for that.
Right, but you're still adding more supply to a market that doesn't, hasn't absorbed the existing capacity. Right, but you're still adding more supply to a market that doesn't, hasn't absorbed the existing capacity. And I think the thing that really concerns me about the villa style, I'm not against the villa style. And I understand you're marketing it to a senior population. I'm not against that either. That's a great idea. But if you're going to do that, I would really ask that you put your money where your mouth is. And what I mean by that is make it a fifty-five-plus community, make it a sixty-plus community, so that, you know, when you buy in, you know what you're getting. I mean, I know if I were in that age range or any age range and I'm buying a house, I'm depending, and I think that I'm going to be living with a bunch of people my age, I want to have some assurance before I clock down a half a million bucks or more to say that I'm going to have someone like that. There's nothing in this plan, as it's presented, that would prevent me from moving in next to you. You don't want that, especially if I've got five kids screaming and all that kind of stuff. So, I would give some thought to making it truly a fifty-five-plus or a sixty-plus community, so that everyone knows what they're getting for sure. I mean, I get all your marketing materials, and I have an appreciation for that. But I think when you truly call it a fifty-five-plus or sixty-plus, then you can have more assurance as a buyer to get what you asked for. And it also matches into what we talked about from a PUD, which is a public good. And that's, I think, one of the staff's comments of letters A, B, D, and H, whatever they were. One of them was the diversity and adding housing stack to that, to your point about the elder, you know, people older that want that kind of thing. Again, hey, if we're going to do it, then let's do it. Let's call it a fifty-five-plus, sixty-plus, and make it be that. Not just, because now, as it stands, anybody can move in. And I think that runs a risk of what, you know, the person that moves in, you know, might not, you could really alter the dynamic and what the rest of the development turns out to be. The other thing about the PUD, if we're not going to do fifty-five-plus or sixty-plus, and now we're taking out the trail, and I do see some logic to why you take that out, because it's a trail to nowhere as it stands now. And it's certainly no public good if you can't get to it, other than the people that live there. But when you take that out, there's really not a lot of public good in the PUD as it stands. It's just another development. And I think that's part of what a PUD should be. I get there's some other things that are listed, but primarily speaking, we should have some kind of public good, and then if nothing else, at least make it a fifty-five or sixty-plus community, then there's some public good there, so.
Well, and the saving of the trees, too.
There's no saving, there's a seventy-eight percent reduction in the number of trees. That's not saving trees.
Well, the other one, you would wipe out all of the trees.
I bet there's not, we're talking two options here. There's more than two options. You could do a villa style with twelve houses and take less trees, and still be within our density requirements. And I'm just making up twelve. It could be eleven, it could be thirteen. There's, the trees are going to go in no matter how many houses because of the grading. It's not a function of houses. It's a function of the grading.
Right.
So, the other thing I think about the density is when you have a lot of houses, you know, you want to try to create a neighborhood feel, and you've got that same density in Red Oak, yet the two neighborhoods aren't connected at all. They're not connected with a trail, they're not connected with a street. You basically, there's no connectivity between two adjacent dense areas that, there should be some kind of connection. I'm not going to get into how to solve that. That's not my job. I'm not the developer. But that's one of my concerns. I also want to talk a little bit about the roads. County Road nineteen, clearly Henningman County stated that they like to see turn lanes in both directions. Boy, is this a relevant topic, because we just got done talking about earlier this year, County Road forty-four, adding turn lanes down on, I forget the name of the road, but you know where.
Lewis.
Thank you. And that was going to cost us three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And the city had no appetite for that, because it's not a city road. We're running into the potential same kind of issue here. And here we have the opportunity to have those turn lanes added now without a cost to the city. I'm, you know, I'm glad we dropped the idea of the Astro, because I think it's a poor idea. But I think we need to capitalize having that turn lane put in now. Because if we don't do it now, when the time comes to redevelop the next lot, if and when, twenty years, whatever, whoever owns house number one is going to be in here complaining about having a turn lane going right next to their house. They're not going to care about what was talked about here. I think we need to get that addressed now. And there is a lot of traffic on that road. You know, obviously, I'm not too far away, and we just had an accident there this week that wiped out the whole stop sign.
Let me ask, let me ask a question, just, hold on. Because maybe we can address some of these. So, is, is it, there's a right-hand turn lane being requested, or not?
Left.
Okay. I mean, left, yeah. So, a left-hand turn lane. Left-hand turn lane is going in. What about easement for a future potential?
They're taking right-of-way.
They're taking right-of-way. Okay, so, in the future, there would be right-of-way for that left-hand, or right-hand, right-hand turn lane?
Yeah.
And the idea is to put that in, should a development to the south, the Bailey property, for instance, ever develop, then that one would go in? So, that kind of, does that answer your question?
Well, it's not a question. It's a concern. I mean, I get it. I understand. But I think it's better policy for us to get that in now, not at a future point. I think the opportunity is here now to do that, and it'd be a good time to take care of it. That's, that's all I'm saying. I think, just for potential neighborhood opposition down the line, cost, you know, a number of things that could be taken care of if we took care of it right now. As somebody pointed out before, I think in the audience, the narrower street, I'm concerned about that from the parking problem, as we've seen in Red Oak. That is a big issue.
But this is a, this isn't a through street. That's the only thing. I was going to address the narrower roads, too.
Yeah, but it's even a bigger problem for emergency vehicles then. So, I still think there's, that, that's a bit of concern as well. So, I think there's a lot, I'm not overall opposed to the development, but I think if we spent a little more time revising this to take into account everyone's considerations, it could be a really good development. And I just don't think we're there yet, so. And those are my concerns.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
I think Mr. Mulder raises some good points about the density. And I'm wondering, I know there's a, there, you reach a number where it makes the development just not feasible, if you take the density down too much. And I'm wondering if we've really explored where that point is. Is it, at what point do we, is it, are we not able to build the villa homes? And if we take it down to ten, or if we take it down to nine, at what point is that, that this development becomes unfeasible?
I can make a comment on, if I can.
Yes, please.
If this is any less than fourteen, it becomes a single-family neighborhood, as thus you see here. It's not that it's not feasible. It creates a different market. It creates a market that promotes non-tree of lots on-site, creates larger houses. Make a comment on the fifty-five-plus. I will not do that. Absolutely won't do that. I will not discriminate. A number of people that, that approached, that approached me when it was larger lots, one couple of the two had no children. They couldn't have children. They're professionals. And they wanted to live in the country, because they parked their, they live in Maple Grove, and they parked their boat at North Shore Drive Marina. I have the villa homes. You notice this house right here? That house, the blue house, that's a two-story home of the young family. He is Indian and works at Cardo. And wanted to be close to Cardo, because he's a research person. And he has younger children that go to Groveland Elementary, right across the street. So, there's a whole, there's, to have your, if you want a successful neighborhood, you also, you, you, the more you funnel what that neighborhood has to be, the more you, you set yourself up for risky behavior, which in essence, I'm taking a risk here that it's a new voyage, that it's villa homes, and it's retirees or professionals that's in your packet. If it's any less than fourteen, I'm not going to be doing villa homes. So, it would be single-family homes. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to tree, to re-tree on-site. It just won't work. So, I'm not going to, and I'm not going to do a fifty-five. I'm not going to quartile it. I will design it for retirees, professionals, or people that don't have children. And I do believe that's better for the neighborhood, because you're putting too much emphasis on where children would play. As it relates to the fifty-foot versus the sixty-foot road, in essence, if you want to do a sixty-foot road, I for sure wipe out all the trees, and I never, and they never have an opportunity to come back, because I push the houses back further.
Thank you.
Okay, so a couple of comments, I think, so we're talking about density. And my, my thought was, one, currently, this development is kind of a, and I know I've talked to some of you about this, it's kind of a enclave in and of itself. It, the people that would eventually buy here and live here, they don't have to go through the Red Oak development. They don't have to go through or down Grandview. The traffic, the construction traffic doesn't go either of those places either. This is a entrance right off of nineteen, going right into this, this road, whatever, Nicholas Road, or whatever it's called. So, the construction traffic would go in here. The, eventually, the residents would just go in and out. They wouldn't be driving through Grandview. Why would they drive through Grandview?
Because of the way this is planted, when the next development gets put in, that road's going to go out and then onto Grandview.
I understand that. But the Baileys have also said that they're not planning on developing in any near future. That we're talking twenty years from now, maybe.
Sure, okay. Then, then we should be requiring that to be a city standard cul-de-sac, and treating it as though it will never be touched to the south, and putting in those turn lanes like I described. So, I mean, we're going to have.
Wait, hold on just a second. But, okay, but then, so, hold on. So, then the other thing is the, so that's how I'm viewing it. And what I'm looking at is, I'm looking at that option, option A or option B. And when I look at option A, and I hear, I understand we're going to lose trees. But I don't want it to look like Red Oak. And if we go with option B, and yes, you get maybe two less units, maybe three at the most, but then it's going to look like Red Oak. I don't want that. I don't think the residents even want that.
I don't, I disagree.
I know, I know. But this is how I'm looking at it. And so, if I can get, if I can get option A, and get those trees, and buffer it, so that even visually, you don't even see many of the homes, it's not that you're going to not see any of them, still going to see some of them. I think that's a win. It's a win for the neighbors, and it's a win for the city. I mean, we can disagree on that, but that's how I'm viewing it.
Well, we will disagree. And I think when we look at the setbacks from the backyard, if that's only twenty feet to the property line, from those houses to the backyard, the Red Oak house is backed right up to that, and there, there's a huge elevation difference. So, these houses are going to look down right into the back windows of the houses on Red Oak.
What's going to happen if you go with option B?
I don't, how about option C?
What's that?
He doesn't have an option.
He's not giving us.
That's what I'm saying, is we need to see an option C.
He's, but he.
I don't, but again, if, if, you know, you're doing this black and white, I don't think we're at that point yet.
Well, but Councilmember Bruce asked, and the answer was, if I can't do fourteen of these, these villas, then I go away with the villas, and I come back with the eleven single-family lots.
Twelve.
Okay, twelve, whatever. That, so that's, that's, those are the options on the table. Mr., I'll give you just a couple of minutes, if you wanted.
I want to take that off.
Okay, just, yeah, and then we're, and then, then we're going to close it.
Very good suggestion. I like what you're doing. I mean, you know, I'm in the investment business. We all want to maximize profit, right? But, look, this is pretty simple. Seventy-eight percent of the trees are going to go no matter what, all right? It's kind of a red herring. I was hoping that would be the case, but like you say, it's the geology. I mean, it's just the topography of the, you know, so the bottom line is, he says he's going to do this or that. He's going to do, he's going to build units. They're going to sell in this marketplace. And if he thinks he can sell fourteen villas, then that's great. I bet you two bets that he can sell twelve villas and probably make just, just about as much money. I mean, I think he's going to do okay, either way. I don't think it's your concern to maximize.
No, no, I'm not saying that's, you're right, you're right. Okay, Ms. Thol?
Well, as far as it being our concern or not, not to, you know, maximizing the profits, that's your business, but also the letters are sent to the neighbors that live within five hundred feet, and five thousand.
A thousand feet for the PUD, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Miss Anne corrected on that. But anyway, the Baileys are the ones that live closest. And I'm not hearing them being strongly opposed. They, I think they've expressed some concerns. You're addressing that as far as the sewer or that. The, and I have just a couple of random thoughts here as far as the trees. Unfortunately, that's part of what happens when you build or you develop. You need to take some out. But Mr. Martino has told us how he has been nurturing the trees that are there. And any that he takes out, the more he takes out, the more he's going to have to pay more to put in. So, I'm thinking it would be a good business decision on his part to try maximize his current investment there. As far as, you know, the, the turn lanes, as the Bailey said, they're not looking at changing for twenty years. So, I think that although we want economies of scale, whether it's, you know, the northbound and the southbound turn lane, if we're talking twenty years out, I think that that's an issue that we can address when we get closer to that situation. And, and of course, it needs to comply, you know, chief falls within the, the safety and, and roads and all of that sort of thing. So, we're not looking for an exception to that. And, and just to say a word about the Red Oak development. I drove through there yesterday. It started out really rough. That was a, it, it, from there being, the greens having been treated with certain chemicals, that that needed to be excavated, to turning over to a different developer. It looked like hell a year and a half ago. It was rough. It, I don't know any, I, in my mind, I don't know anybody who would have wanted to buy there, bought there. But yesterday, when I drove through, it looked nice. That developer has really turned that area around. So, I, I think it's time to, you know, kind of, I know it's tough. I don't live in the adjacent property there, so it's easier to say. But need to give them a little bit of credit for having improved upon what was a really rough situation there. And, and then, however, on that, I, I do question whether or not, and certainly it's your decision to make, whether you want to call it the Villas at Red Oak. You know, if, if Red Oak has, you know.
Red Oak Woods.
Okay, okay. But just an editorial comment there. I like the idea of the villa homes. I do, I think that there's, that there's a good market for that. And in our 2040 comprehensive plan draft under the urban development, one of the points is, as family members age, alternative housing styles should be considered allowing residents to remain in Minnetrista. And so, that's all I have for now.
I just want to add one more thing with Mike's comment about connecting the two neighborhoods.
Oh, I need to touch on that.
I agree with Lisa on that. These are two different style clientels. I think if I were to buy a villa in that neighborhood, and it was lost, the, the blockage and all that, I'd be very disappointed. I, I would want them to be treated separately.
I agree with you one hundred percent on that.
You guys are twenty feet apart.
I know, but you, they're, but you're opening it up, creating it look like Villa Red Oaks Two. This here is a different clientele, and.
Well, as he just said, it may not be, because if you're doing fifty-five.
It's a different style. A different style.
Different style, but not different client. Different style, but not different clientele, 'cause as Jeff pointed out, it could be anybody.
It can be.
And, and, you know, I, I don't, you know, some of his pictures showing the, the trees right there is a little deceiving for this area because these are gonna be bulldozed and we're gonna be looking at fresh trees. And keep in mind, if it's twenty feet, I mean, that's from me to Brian away, you know, and those you look at-
Well, the building pads are more than twenty feet.
No, from the, from the, from the Red Oak behind it. So you look at like lots, I can see-
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah, not so much one, but, you know, three, four, five, six, seven, all the way along that back pad. Those are twenty feet off the lot lines, and those houses in Red Oak pushed right up against their back lot line. So, it, I, they're building one right now, it's the second-to-last house in the cul-de-sac, and it is pushed right into the woods. They actually had to take some trees down to get that house in. And so, when you look at a setback from the yard, it's twenty feet to the yard and then ten feet-
It's gonna be that regardless of whether it's ten units or twelve units or whether it's single-family or whether it's villa. That's, that's what it's gonna be.
Mayor, can I make a comment? Because I stood in that house yesterday. It backs up to the woods, and it is shut all the way back.
You need to come to the podium.
It is shut all the way back, and that's really what my, that is, that is, that is the total spirit of this. It is pushed all the way back to those trees. This red line is fifteen feet. The setbacks, twenty. These houses are far away from the twenty-foot setback. These are standard houses that-
Mr. Martino, how far is it, how far are the setbacks, the back of the house to the property line?
These houses are, that's twenty, I'll bet these houses are forty to forty-five feet from the, from the back lot line, 'cause that's a fifteen, this is fifteen feet right there. And these houses, we have them all, they have them all penned in on their path. They're, they're the style, we're, the, the plan goes with the development. That's what it is.
There's a huge elevation difference though.
Yeah, there is.
There is.
It's gonna negate that buffer because you're gonna look right over them, right into it.
It would even be worse though, at the single-family home, you have a two, three-story home.
These are also, you still have that, that height.
Not as much with the villa style as you would with the-
Again, I'm not opposed to villa style, I'm just saying, let's have fewer of them.
Okay, so, where do you wanna go with this? So there's two, two things. First, it's, it's the PUD and to rezone it to PUD. I don't know that anybody's really saying no to rezoning it to the PUD. Now, the only question I would have of staff is, if you rezone it to PUD, does it then go hand-in-hand with the preliminary plat? Or can you say, well, rezone it, but then we wanna see this, this, or this? I mean, how does that work? Or you wouldn't wanna rezone it if you?
Well, right, I mean, the rezoning request, I mean, needs to be acted on first, 'cause if that, you know, was unsuccessful, you know, obviously the, the plat then it would be as well. You'd have to act on both. You, you need to get specific, you know, specifics with what you're talking about with that rezoning, 'cause yes, they do go hand-in-hand together, but, you know, it depends upon how, what, what's being changed and, you know, that may not require a, a rezone to a PUD.
And then, Mr. Abel, or maybe Mr. Martino, I don't know, do you know if this, let's say it wasn't rezoned and it was a straight R2, could, could he get the density, the required density without variances?
The, as demonstrated tonight, he can get twelve units on there using the rules set forth in our zoning regulations. So no.
So he can't get the density?
He can't, no, correct. He can't, he could not achieve what rules have been put in place.
Okay, I thought the density was between nine and fourteen.
Correct.
Okay, but you said-
He can't, he, but right, I mean, you, you, there's a range, there's a, a max, a minimum and a maximum. I mean, he can get within the range, but you, you've guided it to a, a point of four, a maximum of fourteen, but the rules don't allow him to get there. The, the zoning rules, the size, the lot sizes for the R2 district, the setbacks for the R2 district, he can only get twelve units.
Okay, and that would be-
The mechanism to get him to the maximum is either variances or a PUD, rezoning to a PUD.
Okay, okay. Okay. It's, it's an emotional thing for some, I know, and I know I can really appreciate the, the residents over there in that neighborhood because of the trauma that they went through with the other development. I don't wanna liken this one to that one. I do think it's different. Uh, one, it's much, much smaller, but, and yes, you're right, you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose a lot of trees. And I don't know how, you know, if there's some way that you can go out and you can stake it, I, for us to see it. I, I don't know.
We can't take it on site and start grading.
Right, yeah. And have you thought of custom grading? Would that help at all? No, it's just because of the, the steep slopes and-
Well, by the time, by the time you start to grade on that site, you're gonna lose the trees. It's just whether or not you've created a, um, a product that goes into that neighborhood that promotes and allows you to re-tree on site. You are gonna lose seventy percent of those trees. You are gonna lose ninety percent of those trees, if not a hundred, if you do a single-family residence, because then you have to do more grading, 'cause the paths need to be better. It's just, you know, this, this twelve to fourteen is this way. It's side by side by side by side. It's not like this way. It's not like one behind the other. It's one street, go as close to this street as you possibly can and minimize the, the backyards. That's what it is. It's a sheet, it's unfortunate. As much as I have nurtured those trees for fourteen years, those trees are coming down. It's just trying to minimize the impact of it. I wish there was a golf course there, 'cause I would do larger lives, and everybody would be happy. A golf course is gone. It's fifty-nine homes, no park. That's what it is.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see a reason not to vote on the PUD. I think we've heard enough and we know what the consequences are if it goes either way. For me, I have enough information to vote on the PUD and the preliminary plat. And I know you're never gonna make everybody happy.
Right, yeah.
But I don't, I don't see that anything's gonna be gained by just pushing this off and asking him to come back with something that, that he's not gonna come back with. So I, I'm comfortable voting.
Okay, okay, yeah, you're right. I don't think everybody's gonna be happy and, um, I, I would like to make a couple of comments. If it does go forward, I would like to say that, I still would like to see a trail, and maybe the trail would end at the, um, at the HOA Park versus going to the end of the property, but that way, at least for the neighborhood, they'd have a little trail. And in the future, then it, it could be connected, if, again, we're talking twenty years down the road.
You're talking about here?
Yes.
Okay, after I got with Bailey's, the first thing I did was I went home and I went, I'm gonna eliminate this and then circle this, so that it makes sense for these neighbors, these homeowners to walk down here and circle and come back, not just end there.
Right.
It's a finished product, and indeed this for future access. For the record, I did contact CalAtlantic. I tried to come in that way. In between two of their houses. That didn't go down very well.
Okay, ma'am.
Sure.
To that point, I, I don't, I thank you for doing that. Uh, and obviously, if, if CalAtlantic was of that mindset, then that's the mindset they were. But I think that's potentially where we as a city maybe need to have a discussion with CalAtlantic to say about and address some of the things, 'cause your point about Saga Hills Park is absolutely valid. I mean, it's, it's swamped with, you know, fifty-nine homes. I think, and I've always said that the last two months of that development should be next to the park, make the park bigger, make it accessible. But I think it may be, just rather than just having you having the conversation with CalAtlantic, it might behoove city staff to also be part of that conversation so that it's not just two private entities having that discussion.
Well, but CalAtlantic wouldn't be, I mean, we can't force them to sell, we can't force them to do that. And they've already said no. That might be, like you said, a, a discussion for the future.
Well, I assume they wanna still do business in the city.
Yeah, I don't know.
Right? So, it, it might be, it might behoove them to, to be a little bit less rigid and help their development as well.
I understand. I don't necessarily disagree, but, okay, so, staff is recommending to adopt ordinance number four hundred and forty-nine to rezone ten thirty-five County Road Nineteen from an R2 to a PUD. Where do we stand?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Okay, a motion has been made.
Ma'am, mayor, just one, one clarification before you actually vote. We just need to add to the motion that we're, we're changing out Exhibit C as part of that ordinance with the new hardcover calculations that's been presented this evening to you by the applicant. Um, so just wanna note that for the record that we'll go ahead and make that change with that exhibit. The other note that I wanna make is that, um, depending upon how the vote goes, the rezoning would also become, it would not become effective until approval of the final plat. That would be added to that ordinance as well.
Okay, okay, so a motion has been made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Um, any further comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, there's four ayes and one in Mr. Maladur, no. Then, it's, do you wanna do the authorized publication, 'cause that's not done yet, then?
Yes, yes, you wanna do that. Title and summary.
Okay.
Yes, we have to publish it, yes.
Okay, so, um, the next one is authorizing the publication of ordinance four forty-nine by title and summary. Is there a motion to do so? Otherwise, we have to publish the entire ordinance.
Sum.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made the motion and Ms. Mortensen seconded that. Further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, you wanna spend more money?
Well, I'll run it, me as well. Go ahead.
All right, that's four ayes and one nay. And, um, so, now we're gonna approve the preliminary plat or talk about the approval of the preliminary plat for the Villas at Red Oak. And I know we've talked about density and doesn't seem like there's a lot of wiggle room here. The only thing I'm, the comment I'm gonna make is one, I think the trail needs to go in. At least it needs to go in and, and go to the HOA amenities. In the future, it can be extended to the property line, but, um, at least we'd have that in. And the other thing is, I really, really, I think we really need to keep tabs on trying to make this something that, even though some of the neighbors are opposed to it, that in the end, that they're gonna say, okay, it's not as bad as we thought it would be.
That's a nice standard instead of supply.
I'd like to see it be something that we all can be proud of, so. Mr. Abel, do you need any more?
Madam Mayor and Council, the only suggestion that I would have is the conditions be added to the resolution approving the preliminary plat of the handout that the applicant handed out this evening. There's some specifics on there that he has agreed to doing with the fifteen-foot buffer and the conservation easement. We can certainly add those conditions to the resolution, but that, that would be part of your motion as well this evening.
And the, down the fifteen-foot buffer, it's to make sure that the sewer line is that part there.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, so I have a fifteen-foot buffer conservation, conservation easement around the perimeter with the exception of this, on the sewer line. Um, and then I also have, um, installing the trail to the HOA park amenities. Preserving as many trees as possible, and-
Minimum of fifty percent.
Okay, minimum.
You can, Madam Mayor, it's probably easier just to reference his handout.
Okay.
He has all the, there's hardcover reduction and the, the different tree.
Okay.
Trees outlined there.
Handout, okay, so that would be fifteen-foot buffer conservation easement around the perimeter of the development with the, um, exception of over the sewer line installation of the trail to the HOA amenities and then referencing the handout with the, um, hardcover copy. Does that cover us?
Fifteen-foot conservation easement.
Yeah, I said that. Around the perimeter, okay. Obviously, for the road, you would have entrance and so on.
It's two-pronged. It's fifteen percent, uh, no cut zone, more than thirty percent on construction, and then, um, fifty percent replanning, and then after that, fifteen-foot conservation easement.
Okay, did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in his handout.
Thank you, okay. All right, so we're gonna reference the handout with the, the additional, um, parameters. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Okay, so just from my understanding here, um, developer agrees to replant on site a minimum of fifty percent of the obligation for reforestation. When I first heard this, I thought we were doing a hundred percent on site, so we won't have to write a check. What this is telling me is that he's gonna have to write a check for fifty percent.
You forgot the word minimum.
Right, but minimum's what we have to go by, 'cause that's the word. It doesn't say actual. So there's a potential that we would write the check for up to fifty percent.
I'm not interested in that.
Well, that's not what it says.
Okay, hold on, hold on, we're not, we're not gonna debate this.
No.
So what, how would you like it worded?
Well, i- if, what I've heard so far, in all, in planning commission, all of it, was that the goal was, and Ms. Martino was very adamant about this, not to have to write a check for the reforestation.
Okay.
That means that all of the reforestation has to happen on-site. It can't be fifty percent of the obligation. It would have to be a hundred percent if we're really gonna meet that goal.
Could we, I understand, I understand what you're saying. You're correct, you're correct. So could we do this, because I think what might happen is, if there's too many trees, they might not survive, and we definitely want, so is there some way it could be worded where staff kinda makes, can we work with staff on that?
Well, I, you know, you can do what you want. I, all I wanna make sure is that-
I understand, yeah.
People understand that this has changed dramatically over the course of the discussion within the last two weeks. We've gone from a hundred percent to fifty percent. Just wanna make sure everyone's understanding what you're signing up for. 'Cause I will not sign up for that. But, you know, if, if you wanna say, I don't care if you put seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent, a hundred percent, or any other number, let's just be clear that this is not the same thing that we were looking at before. So you pick your number, I don't care.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying. It says here, fifteen-foot buffer surrounding northwest-south side with no more tree removal than thirty percent except where main sewer water lines are constructed. Developer agrees to replant on site a minimum of fifty percent, so we, like you said, we could make that higher, of the obligation for reforestation focusing on the fifteen-foot parameter. But obviously, he's also gonna be required to do boulevard trees, so he has to do that too.
But he can focus wherever, fifty percent is what we're saying.
I, um, Mr. Mr. Abel, are boulevard trees required in addition to replacement trees? That's what I thought. So, um, what I'm saying is, he has to replant, and we'll say replanting as, minimum of fifty, hope maximum of a hundred percent on site.
I mean, you can hope for whatever you want, but I don't really like the right things based on hope.
No, I understand. Is there another number that, what about the rest of the council? Would you feel comfortable with a larger number?
Could you say with a goal of one hundred percent?
Okay.
And the minimum of fifty, with a goal of a hundred percent?
Is it possible to replace a hundred percent? I know you're gonna take out some dead trees.
I can plant a hundred percent, have that. I've nurtured those streets for fourteen years. If I was gonna cut them down, I'm gonna cut them down. I've been a fire there every year. My goal is one hundred percent. I don't have a problem with that being in the, in the resolution.
That's okay, so we'll say, um, minimum of fifty with a goal of a hundred. That's a good...
Perfect.
I got a goal of losing thirty pounds too with seven...
Well... Well, we'll, we'll work on this, okay, Mike? We, we wanna, we wanna make sure that we get a good buffer and, and I think, um, I'm gonna trust that he's gonna work with us and... So we're saying minimum fifty, um...
I'm okay with that. I am as well.
Are you okay with that? All right, all right, so how are we gonna formulate this resolution?
Well, Madam Mayor, I think you can make the motion to adopt the resolution per the, the handout that was submitted by the applicant specifically. The only specific one you need to talk about is your minimum of fifty percent with a goal of a hundred. I think that's the only deviation from his handout.
Okay, and the, um, and installing the trail?
You're correct.
Okay, all right, does somebody want to attempt? Okay, I will word it for, for you folks, okay. So we're gonna approve this, um, preliminary plat for the villas at Red Oak Woods on County Road nine, at ten thirty-five County Road nineteen with the conditions, um, as referenced by staff, our engineering, and also the handout by the, um, applicant referencing, um, replanting a minimum of fifty percent with a goal of a hundred percent of reforestation on the, on the property itself. There will be a fifteen-foot buffer conservation easement around the perimeter on the southwest, um, and north sides with, um, exception, um, over the, uh, main, sewer main and water main lines and also installing the trail along the edge of the, uh, per, uh, road, um, going to the HOA, um, gazebo amenity, whatever that is.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, does that cover us? All right, thank you. Um, so a motion was made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. All those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Uh, motion passes four one. Michael, uh, Mr. Malater dissenting. Okay. Go and save those trees. All right, uh, we're gonna take a break because we're almost at our nine o'clock and so we'll take about a five, six-minute break and then we'll come back. And move on with our agenda. Okay, um, okay, we're back after a short break, a little longer than we thought, but that's okay, so we're back. Uh, we'll continue with our agenda here. Our next business item is, um, our budget process approval. So we're looking to approve the twenty eighteen preliminary tax levy. Um, there's a number of items and then we'll also be approving the debt levy and then also, um, setting the date for a public comment on the twenty eighteen levy and budget. So, Mr. Grimm?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This is, I guess, the continuation of our discussions from the work session and then the, uh, presentation that was at the beginning of the, uh, the meetings for, uh, on, um, the, uh, setting of the twenty eighteen preliminary levy. What's presented in your packet, starting on page one sixty-seven, was, um, three different options. And, um, we had a pretty, uh, lengthy discussion at the work session on the three different options, you know, based on our discussions from the past, um, few meetings in regards to the, uh, preliminary levy and budget. It seemed to be a consensus at the meeting to, uh, adopt the preliminary levy, which is a, basically a ceiling or, um, the amount that would be certified to the county that then would either, you know, can stay the same or be reduced but not increased. Um, there seemed to be a consensus for, I'm trying to find the page in your packet, option three, which is on...
One seventy-four.
Page one seventy-four, the packet, correct, which would be a total, um, gross proposed levy of four million five hundred eighteen thousand six hundred fifty dollars, so, um, I don't know, otherwise I'll probably, uh, open it up to council if there's any other questions or, or comments.
I'd just like to make a correction that it's the consensus of the majority of the council. I think you left that part out.
Okay, sorry, yeah, correct, yeah, consensus of the majority of the council. Thank you for that correction.
Yep, so we, um, had a lengthy discussion on this. This is the preliminary levy and as we discussed, it can be reduced, it cannot be increased. And, um, I think the consensus was, let's go with the higher one and let's work on the numbers and see if we can bring it down. And if not, we're still, we're still good, but, um, we can, we can still, um, bring it down, we just can't raise it. So with that, um...
We'd be looking for a motion to that effect, to adopt that resolution that's on page, um, one seventy-four and the amount of, yeah, stated the four million five eighteen six fifty and to certify that to the county.
All right, so adopting the proposed twenty seventeen tax levy, collectible in twenty eighteen in the amount of four million five hundred and eighteen dollars and six, six hundred and fif- six hundred and fifty dollars. Is there a motion to that effect or comments?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion has been made by Mr. Malater and seconded by Ms. Thol. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay, uh, four ayes and Ms. Bruce, nay. Okay, and so now we have to, um, decide on, uh, to approve the debt levy at a hundred percent of the twenty eighteen bond payment.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, and this is something that the, uh, county asks us to do every year. It's basically per our principal and interest schedules, per the statute referenced on page one seventy-seven, I guess it's four seventy-five oh six one. Municipalities may levy up to a hundred and five percent of the next year's bond debt payments. Um, the city council has historically levied for a hundred percent of next year's bond payments. Um, that additional five percent usually provides against buffers for delinquencies and such. We've usually had a good enough collection percentage where we've been able to get by with levying a hundred percent of the principal and interest payments, you know, um. I guess just for reference, if, um, we would want to levy for a hundred and five, that would increase the debt levy by another forty-five thousand, but staff's not recommending to do that. We're recommending to adopt the attached resolution, which would be levy for a hundred percent of the twenty eighteen bond payments on our existing debt issues, um, and then monitor for future budget cycles to see if the change to a hundred and five percent levy of future bond payments is warranted.
Okay, just one question. So we talked about in our budget process, um, the, um, Halsted Enchanted Tuxedo Road bond and only levying for part of it, other than...
Correct, yeah, that one we'd be phasing in, so that way we'd have that select number, that would be some percentage of, yeah, so...
So do we, so if we pass this at a hundred percent, then we'd have to then levy more?
This talks about existing debt issues. I mean, we don't even have the final debt schedules, you know, finalized for, maybe we've done the final sale of the bonds
Okay.
for Halsted and Enchanted yet, so when that would gets done, we'll coordinate with the county too. And they'll see on the attached, um, what we just adopted, what we're planning on doing through our twenty seventeen street projects.
Okay.
So we'd, you know, we will be sending down those attachments that'll say this is what we're planning on levying, which will be less, it'll even be less than a hundred percent.
Right.
It'll be sixty-six or seventy-five or whatever percent once we're all said and done or whatever.
Okay.
So I think this will satisfy what the county's looking for. Usually what they're looking for is they get the copies of the existing debt schedules, principal and interest. If you're levying a hundred thousand versus a hundred and five, they usually say, why are you doing that? So then we say we're levying for a hundred percent versus a hundred and five percent or whatever, so...
Okay, all right, all right. Any other questions? Otherwise, um, is there a motion to approve the debt levy, um, at a hundred percent of the twenty eighteen bond payment? I don't know, what, what page is that on?
Uh, I think it was on one seventy-seven.
Is it? I'm sorry, okay.
Or one seventy-eight's the resolution.
No.
Yeah, okay. Approved debt levy at a hundred percent of twenty eighteen bond. Okay, is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, um, any questions, comments? Um, all those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four one. Um, Ms., um, Bruce dissented. Okay, and now we have, um, date for the public comments on the twenty eighteen levy and budget.
Correct, yeah, so as the statute requires, the city selects a date to discuss the tw- uh, proposed budget and property tax levy for twenty eighteen. Uh, this meeting can usually happen, or it's, uh, way it's laid out is it can happen anytime after November twenty-fourth, so what, um, and that it must be after six P M. So per our city council's schedule, first regularly scheduled meeting after the November twenty-fourth would be December fourth of twenty seventeen. Staff recommends selecting this date to take public comment on the budget and levy, um, before the final twenty eighteen budget and levy were to be adopted. So that would be December fourth, tw- two thousand seventeen at seven P M.
Okay.
For that public comment date.
Okay, any questions? Okay, that gives us about three months. All right, is there a motion to, uh, select December fourth at seven P M. as the public comment date for discussion of the twenty eighteen budget and tax levy and take public comment? I guess I already said that.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, five oh. And next, um, I have a question now on the next one, and this is declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessments. But we don't, I mean, the Tuxedo and Enchanted Lane projects haven't even started yet. Are we certain that they're going to start, that they're gonna get finished this year?
Well, the, the contract would have it that way. Uh, we're working through some permit issues right now, um, with the Watershed District. But, um, you know, they're looking at having a pre-construction meeting on Friday of this week. And preliminarily, they want to start construction next week. So we'll have to evaluate with the Watershed District's latest letter we got late this, late this afternoon and work with the contractor on that and work with the Watershed District and our staff to resolve the issues. There's three items, yeah, I can resolve two of them, um, pretty quickly.
Okay, um...
Go for it. Let's go for it.
So do we want to do this? I mean, or...
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're just, so when it says declaring cost to be assessed, um, do we have to state the amount then?
Correct, you would state the total amount to be assessed in that...
Total amount, okay.
And then working with, um, uh, Finance Director Grimm, uh, and, uh, the bonding consultant, we've looked at what the contingencies and indirect costs would be and those are gonna be identified in the resolution. So Mayor and members of the council, uh, in the feasibility report, the preliminary assessments included sixty-two benefiting properties to be assessed, six thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-one cents per parcel. That amount was, um, identified as fifty percent of the costs, uh, for the, for the project, which is in accordance with the city's, uh, assessment policy for this type of a project. The total assessable amount, uh, is recommended in the feasibility report to be four hundred thousand, excuse me, four hundred thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the assessments would be levied for a twenty-year period at a rate of two percent greater than the interest rate on the associated bond issue. And that's in accordance with the city's policy. Uh, so for example, on the second page indicating that if the bonding interest rate is around three percent, the assessment interest rate would be five percent. So this is very similar to Halsted Drive. Um, the resolution also calls for the hearing date to be October second, twenty seventeen. We would expect that the contractor would be working prior to that time. Uh, the, so the, um, assessment, the, the, the amount to be assessed is being recommended to be, um, the total assessment amount is four hundred thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The bond amount is estimated cost eight hundred and forty thousand dollars and, um, uh, in total. And that would be partially reimbursed by those assessments. And the resolution is in your packet, um, identifying the, um, the cost of the improvement to be paid by the city is declared to be four hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and the portion of the cost to be assessed against the benefit of properties would be declared to be four hundred thousand seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Four hundred thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, excuse me. And again, the interest rate would be two percent greater than the interest rate on the associated bonds at issu- at issuance per annum from the date of adoption of the assessment resolution.
Okay. Right, um, questions?
I have a question. At, at the hearing, if, if an additional property gets pulled off the assessment roll, does the assessed amount on the other properties go up or does it stay the same or do we have to revise the resolution as to the amount or how does that work?
Good question.
We've usually just kept everyone else the same and I guess the city's sort of taken on that, that share if, like, one comes off or two or whatever. So that's where usually it's, you know, there's the minimum that you have to have to do a four twenty-nine project, you know, percent you gotta assess. But, um, in this case, you know, we're assessing basically close to the fifty percent. So we wouldn't reallocate it back to everybody else, correct?
Okay.
One other question, and it's minor, I'm not gonna belabor it, but the, the cost is eight forty and half of that would be four twenty, but we're assessing four hundred, why the twenty thousand difference?
I think there's a little bit as far as whether, um, any of it's just our portion versus what's, you know, uh, you know, attributed back to, you know, benefit. Once in a while, there can be some, you know, what, stormwater stuff or some stuff that really isn't providing, you know, benefit, right? As far as just the street for the property or whatever, so there's, it's not always gonna, it's basically fifty percent of what's attributed to, you know, everything.
Oh, got it, yeah, so there might be some other, other... Yeah, thank you.
Good to know.
Any other questions? Otherwise, um, I'm looking for a, uh, motion to adopt resolution number one fifty-four dash seventeen, declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering preparation of proposed assessment and calling for the hearing on the proposed assessments.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, five oh, and the hearing is October...
Second.
Second. Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, it was included in the resolution.
Okay, it didn't say it here, but, okay, October second will be the, the hearing, all right. So now we'll move on to administrative items, um, staff reports. Um, do we want to start with you, Mr. Beroni?
Sure.
All right.
Yep. I'll step in and I just have one small item. Um, just a reminder, I did, uh, send an email to all council members, uh, last week discussing the date and time for the water treatment plant dedication. It will be a week from today, on the twelfth of September at ten thirty A M. We will be at the North Water Treatment Plant and this will be a dedication that will serve for both plants. We're not gonna go down to the South Plant and do the same thing, we'll just do one for both. Um, so hopefully we will have nice weather and be able to, uh, dedicate our new water treatment plants.
Okay, anything else?
I just need to know who's gonna attend the, uh, we are having a Parks Commission meeting and then, uh, Planning Commission meeting for this month. So the twelfth would be Parks Commission?
When is the, I can do one of them, they are, when is the Planning Commission? It's the fourth Monday, right?
The twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth.
I can do the Parks on twelve.
Okay.
I'll do the Planning on the Monday, September twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Seven P M., correct?
Yep.
Yeah. Any other staff reports over here? Um, so engineering, uh, Enchanted Lane, Tuxedo, you're hoping next week it's to start?
Yeah, I'll have to get a date. We'll have more information on...
On Friday?
Friday, after the meeting, and we'll also have more information in the next couple of days as far as the Watershed.
Okay.
That we got this afternoon.
Just another question. So I had an email from a resident on Enchanted and they were saying that they were asking about the sewer line. Now, that's a Met Council sewer line?
Correct.
Okay, so if it breaks or if it needs repairs or whatever, the Met Council is responsible to repair it?
Correct. If, last year, if you recall, there was a break in a force main down by the boat launch on Tuxedo.
Okay, uh-huh.
Although that was kind of a mess and they didn't do a great, the greatest job in restoration. We're gonna correct some of that with this project. Um, the, uh, uh, same process would occur, although the restoration would be better. They knew that we were working on the roadway and we got...
So they're aware that we're working on the roadway? Did they inspect the sewer line to make sure that it's still good and, I mean, less than we want? we want is-
I did contact the Met Council prior to, to this project, even starting on design, and they had, they didn't have anything in their ten-year capital plan on this sewer.
Okay, so if they go in, they would then replace their own sewer line, and then also have to repair and replace the road at their expense?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I just wanna make sure it's not on our nickel.
I suspect if there's a, if there's an age issue and rehabilitation, it would be done in a mostly trenchless manner. But, if they have to increase capacity, which I don't see that there's been a lot of development out in this service area, that they would need to do that, and have to dig it out.
Okay.
I'm sure they would not prefer to dig it up.
Yeah, all right. All right. Any other reports from staff? Otherwise, we'll move on to council. We'll start, we'll start with you.
Nothing.
Okay.
WCC meeting is on, next week, on the fourteenth, and I attended the Planning Commission meeting last week on the twenty-eighth, and we talked about it tonight.
Yep. Mr. Molliter?
I was also at the Planning Commission meeting. Lake Minnetonka Conservation District actions right now are somewhat slow. We have wrapped up harvesting for the season, and I'm working with them to enhance their Save the Lake foundation to allow those who donate to have their employers make matching contributions.
Oh, good idea.
Something we just, just got going, so.
Good, all right. Ms. Bruce?
Nothing.
Okay. I don't have any meetings, but I just, I just have a number of things that I don't wanna lose sight of, and then, you don't have to tell me tonight, for instance, but we have a number of things that are kind of in the queue. We have the golf, golf cart ordinance, and I think, Chief, you said you would, you thought you would be bringing that back September eighteenth, possibly?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's a ballpark.
Okay.
I'll have to work with probably Ron Beatty, once we get all our ducks in a row, we're still collecting data, so.
All right. We also talked about the manure management ordinance, that's something else we'll be bringing back. We talked about, and approved the social media plan, and so we need a social media policy. We talked about broadband grant. Where would we be talking about that? 'Cause that's coming up.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, we should have something in order to kind of stay on time with that at the next meeting, and then-
At the next one, okay.
Probably, if, if possible, we could probably do the, a social media thing. I know Cassandra's been working on it, but, you know, it still needs a little work, and I think she needs to work with legal, right, to deal with it?
Yeah, but it's been, I just have to send it through. Sorry, just have to send it through legal. So, we started that in May, and then that'll, should wrap up as soon as it goes through Ron, and then obviously come to the council.
Okay, and that was part of our communications plan, I know. And then, the change order policy, we talked about that already, so I think we're okay